Responsibilities, but thank you for joining us on the Civil Rights Subcommittee. We will go ahead and get started since you guys already been on for 10 minutes. I would like to welcome Counselor Govan, who was part of the Subcommittee, Counselor Tim Allen, also part of the Subcommittee, Counselor LaHarkley Bruce, and State Rep Bob Williams, thank you for joining. And I just wanna, and our Attorney Ken Shea, thank you for also joining, but I do wanna go around the room and see who else is on. There's a 116965, just trying to figure out who that is.
John Payne.
Oh, hi, hi, Attorney Payne. And Brian Shea.
Good afternoon, Counselor Whitfield.
Good afternoon, Attorney Shea. Paul? I see Paul Tuhill, but then I just see a Paul, so I'm just trying to figure out who that is. Oh, Counselor Walsh, I do see you, thanks for joining. I see, Vincent Santinello.
Hi, this is Lisa Santinello.
Oh, hi Lisa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Who else? I don't wanna mispronounce your name, Ms. Hernandez, so. And then, but welcome.
Hi, how are you? I'm Lisa Ellis.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
And then Jessie Barbie? If you can just introduce yourself, Jessie.
Good afternoon, my name is Jessie Barbie, I'm a grade educator at the Academy.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't really hear you clearly.
Yeah, my name is Jessie Barbie, I'm a eighth grade educator, science teacher at the Academy.
Okay, well, welcome, thank you for joining us. So, we called this meeting together because, I just wanted to hear some background information on what's going on with the host community agreement and the process with these marijuana, this marijuana establishment. I know that the City Council did approve the special permit, and I thought Chris Nolli was gonna join today, he said that he would, so I'm not sure. I just wanna ask the administrators, our team, if you could send them an email to see if he will still be joining, and also send it out to Phil Dromy, to see if he can join us as well. But I wanna go ahead and get started, because it is part of our civil rights that we are all treated fairly and equally. There is no Latino established marijuana establishment in the city of Springfield, no Latino-owned establishment. And I think that we need to just figure out what's happening and see if we could do what's best for the petitioners and also for the city of Springfield. And so, Attorney Shea, I don't know if you will be the one speaking first, or Ms. Hernandez?
I'd be happy to, Counselor Whitfield.
Sure.
Thank you. So, a lot of the background that you just shared with us is fairly accurate. We have to, as the, I am the attorney representing Springfield DM, and I would just commend Ms. Hernandez on her persistence for this project, because it's been a long time coming. It's wonderful that the city of Springfield gets a cannabis establishment that has minority-owned participation. It's a rarity in our state, and Springfield certainly, you know, could really lead the charge with that. So, our project here, we were fortunate enough to be the selected to have a retail establishment through the second round of licensing through the city of Springfield. And we, if you recall, we were originally gonna locate our place at the Eastfield Mall in Boston Road. Unfortunately, that did not pan out the way we had envisioned. We were fortunate enough to find this location down in East Columbus Avenue. And we had written to the city of Springfield, got some information and background with the help of Phil Dromy, and through the Law Department, working directly with Tilia Gee, she shared with me the information that we need to provide them. And we gave them that in August of last year. And at the same time, we were working towards obtaining a special permit with the City Council. There's nothing that we saw that would prohibit us from obtaining a special permit for this location while the request to relocate the host community agreement to East Columbus Avenue. And remember, we already had a post-community agreement, but its location was gonna be the Macy's building. So, this simply was trying to relocate that into the downtown Springfield area. Prior to doing that, we had met with the civic and neighborhood councils in Forest Park and in the South End, received both, you know, overwhelming support from both of them. And so, we submitted the information and just let the Law Department, MSKI, know that, you know, we're ready to respond if more information or anything was needed. As the special permit process moved along, Mr. Dromy and I had conversations about a traffic study. And the week before we appeared before the City Council, it was determined that we needed a traffic study, or the department was requiring one. I believe that that was coming, that request was coming from Mr. Signoli. So, we went ahead with the special permit hearing before the City Council, and the City Council approved our request for a special permit. And we reassured them that we would get the traffic study, which we had obtained two weeks after that hearing, and we submitted it to Mr. Signoli's department. At that point, I was directed to work with the city engineer, Andrew Carr. And Mr. Carr and I had some conversations, he, I think, did a site visit. He had requested some design information for the site. I had explained to him that, at that point, we weren't looking to submit definitive plans as far as architectural design, because we were still in a fairly preliminary stage, not knowing if the city was gonna approve our ability to operate there. And we didn't wanna have to invest thousands of dollars into doing a tremendous amount of architectural work. And prior to knowing that this would actually be a viable spot in the city's eyes, and allow us to receive the HCA for this particular location. After probably about maybe a month, or maybe six weeks, in the conversation with Mr. Carr, which I memorialized in an email, he assured me they had no objection to the contents of our of our traffic study. And that he, and that, you know, at a future date, if we were to, you know, apply for a building permit, there would obviously be more engineering work for us to do. We'd need to share with him our architectural design plans and work things out such as, you know, entrances, exits, handicapped parking, things of that sort. And I believe that that was the end. Again, I memorialized that in an email, I copied everybody in, including Mr. Dromy, I think Mr. Signoli and Tilia Gee. And Mr. Dromy said, as far as he was concerned, at that point, the special permit process was closed. And that was it, and I expected the thing, this process to move forward. And then, at that point, Mr. Signoli said that he wasn't satisfied with our survey, which was kinda surprising, because we had to submit a survey for our special permit. And again, a new survey wouldn't look much different, but it just, it just seemed to really kinda cloud the process lately. And I would also like just to take a step back and tell you how difficult it was in trying to understand exactly what the process was. I had made inquiry as to what actually would take place, and I was just told that there would be a requirement for there to be departmental review of our requests to relocate the HCA. But I was never told, you know, who the departments were, who has looked at this and approved it, who has looked at this and not approved. And if there's anybody left to review this request for a transfer, despite my effort, because I'd be willing to talk to anybody, but they just told me if they need me, they would reach out, which I find kinda strange, because I remember reading in the newspaper when Six Bricks had relocated theirs, I was under the impression that they're reconvening the committee that originally approved these. And, but again, I don't know, I've just been kind of in the dark, unfortunately, it's been very unfortunate for my client. So, so, you know, just to bring us up to where we are today, we're about maybe eight months into this, we're in March of 2023, I submitted my request in August of 2022. I don't know exactly what's still required, I don't know what departments have, would be in favor of this spot as a location, I don't know what departments would not be in favor of it. I know that Mr. Signoli is, still feels that I am obligated to return some engineering work to him. But when I made a request to meet with him, he declined my request and said no to hire an engineer and have the engineer call, which I thought was really unfortunate. You know, your committee is, I did try to find some background in your committee today, Counselor Whitfield, and I saw that, you know, in addition to just the citizens and residents of Springfield, it's also applies, your group, as far as equity and things of that sort, apply to contractors. You know, and here we have, you know, a minority participant, the cannabis establishment, looking to establish their business here in Springfield. And we don't, and I've been told that we're not, you know, we're not being treated differently than any other candidate, but I can't help but feel as though we are. I don't feel as though information is forthcoming, and I don't feel as though we're being treated as other applicants haven't been treated.
Thank you, Attorney Shea. I mean, based on what I know, I feel the same, I do agree with you. I did speak to Chris Nolli just a couple of days ago, and he did say that the traffic study was in and it was fine, but there was not a site plan that was delivered, and I don't know if that was communicated to your group that that was needed. However, I also don't know what Peyton and Six Bricks had to submit before changing their location, so I don't really want to speak to that. But what I do know is that we should all have equal opportunities and equal protections under the law, regardless of our race, religion, personalities, personal relationships. We should all have the opportunity to fair treatment, especially when it pertains to city government licensing, special permits, HCA agreements, and so on and so forth. And, you know, just based on the information that you provided, I don't know that that is happening in this instance. And it's unfortunate that Phil Dromy isn't here, or Chris Nolli, because Chris definitely said that he would be here, so I'm a little bit disappointed that he didn't make it. We do have Attorney Shea and Judge Payne on, so if we wanna ask them specific questions, we can. I just wanted to know if Ms. Hernandez wanted to speak. Another thing that I wanted to say is that time is money. Time is money, and you guys have been paying out a lot of money for a long time just to try to get an establishment here that's gonna pay taxes, that's gonna be on the tax roll. I think the marijuana establishments have been doing, you know, pretty well in that aspect, and that revenues come back to the city and to the different neighborhoods that they invest in, also that they are in, based on one of the ordinance that Counselor Letterman put forth. So, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Hernandez, that this is happening. I think it's important for us to have a Latino-owned marijuana establishment in the city of Springfield, also women-owned, so we just gotta be fair, we have to do what's right. And I know that when we were, when we were approving the special permit, which you guys really kinda like impressed upon us that you wanted us to do, Counselor Hurst mentioned that, once we approved the special permit, we don't have a lot of teeth on what goes on behind the scenes, but we can make things public, right? We can come out and speak on your behalf and try to do the right thing. So, I wanna give Ms. Hernandez the opportunity to speak, Counselor Walsh, unless you have something specific. Okay, all right, so, Ms. Hernandez, I'm gonna give you the floor.
Hello, hi, how's everyone? I just go out, I'm so sorry, out of the house. Peter, and I prefer my lawyer will answer the question for me today.
Okay, no problem, I understand, and we hope you feel better, we're wishing you the best. And I really hope that this additional stress isn't causing more health problems to you, because I know this must be stressful for you and your family, along with your medical situation. So, I'm gonna keep you in prayer and definitely wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Chair Whitfield, first of all, I would like to just say hello to Ms. Hernandez, and I, and I hope you are feeling well. And I hope after all of us getting together and meeting, that we'll have good news for you, and you will have good health. So, I'm very interested in this particular issue, particularly since, you know, both neighborhood councils are very excited about the project. And I believe you're gonna be investing over $4 million in an area of the city that's been vacant for over 20 years. And I would like to say for the record, I think it'd be very exciting for the city of Springfield to offer and give the first license to a female Latino owner of an establishment. And, you know, listening to some of this discussion, I'm gonna have to say that I'm putting on my hat as the head of the Springfield Women's Commission. I assume that there has been no extra obstacles given to a female business owner who wants to do business in a city where the neighborhood is welcoming you. So, Counselor Whitfield, I think it's kind of important to find out, is there a lack of communication or what's going on here? Because if I was in charge, you'd get the license today. I would hate to think that there's been some discrimination against a female business owner.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. I, I don't know, as far as communication goes, I can only like send emails, try to figure out what's going on. In the last communication I got, Phil said everything was all set as far as the special permit goes. The traffic study that they paid extra money to get, they did do it with no guarantee that they would get an HCA agreement or be able to open, they paid extra money again to get the traffic study done, and it was approved. I just got wind that Chris wanted a site plan, and he said that he's asked for it numerous times. So, Attorney Shea, can you just?
I mean, are they asking this of other people? I think that's important to establish.
Yes, that's, that's my next email. I wanna know what Six Bricks had to do to get it, and I will see the whole council when I request this information. I wanna know what everyone had to do in order to like change your location, if there was a change, and make sure that the communication is equal, right? The way that you communicated with Six Bricks, did you communicate the same way with DMs? Like, did you put everything that they needed in one concise email or one concise request? Ask for this, so they all know everything that they had to get ahead of time. So, I definitely will be putting in that request, Counselor Walsh, and I will definitely make sure the counselors are included.
Well, you know, another thing is, is there some way that when all this miscommunication or whatever it is is cleared up, that this comes before the council and we can approve it? I mean, I'd like to, you know, we can, we can see that, I don't know your particular health situation, but I can tell that obviously there's something going on with you health-wise, I'd like to certainly do this for you, and so it's not an additional stress that impacts your health.
Yes, I agree, Counselor Walsh. And Attorney Shea, Brian Shea, were you communicated about any additional needs outside of the traffic study?
So, again, the request for the traffic study came in around the time that we were in the special permit process. And I had requested from Ms. Tilia Gee if the request for a traffic study was related to the HCA process, or was it related to the special permit process? And I never really got, the answer I got really wasn't an answer. But nevertheless, we were happy to do the traffic study. Oh, I shouldn't say we were happy to do the traffic study, the traffic study really produced insignificant data, because the road is heavily traveled to begin with. It's already a commercial space, so there's already gonna be trips that are associated with the use of that space and its prior use. And the change from that prior use to this proposed use probably wouldn't create that much of a burden on the traffic. Nevertheless, when I, when the request for traffic study came up, maybe being slightly skeptical, I had requested of Mr. Dromy, Mr. Dromy and Mr. Signoli samples of traffic studies that other applicants had submitted. And I requested traffic studies for Insa, for Six Bricks, and for Lemonade, knowing that they were all in the downtown area. I received Insa's, I didn't receive a site plan that corresponded with that. I received Insa's traffic study, which is almost a mirror image of what we had submitted that our consultant had produced two weeks after that special permit hearing. We have a HCA, remember, we have an HCA through the process when we applied for at the Macy's, but we didn't prepare a site plan for that. And so, now, this seems to be somewhat of a strange request. And at the time, Mr. Signoli had sent me, I had also asked him if there was criteria that needed to be included in the traffic study, and he had sent me a checklist. And there's a section on that checklist that star that doesn't relate to a site plan. It relates to the data that's collected and inserted into this memorandum that our consultant had prepared, we submitted to the City Council and to the Law Department.
Thank you, Attorney Shea, I just wanted to ask.
Oh, one more thing, Counselor Whitfield, I don't mean to interrupt, but we had submitted a site plan with our special permit application. That's a requirement, which you approved as a member of the council, that was before the council was approved.
Thank you, Attorney Shea, you are absolutely right, you did. I really don't know what's going on, Counselor Govan.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman. So, I have the same concerns as everyone else, and especially you, Counsel Whitfield. Luis Ellis, thank you for being persistent and continuing in this process. I remember when they first came to the Indian Orchard Citizens Council to talk about the site at the mall, and I was excited about the possibility of them being there, as was many of our residents. So, you know, to think that this has been going on, I think for two or three years now, almost, it seems like it's an unnecessary delay. And of course, it's costing money. So, I just, I'm hoping that Counselor Whitfield, if we could figure out a way to expedite this, I think it is absolutely necessary that we expedite the process and approve the license once and for all. Thank you so much, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Counselor Govan, I agree with you 100%. I was on the marijuana Subcommittee or the Marijuana Task Force, I don't remember the term that we use. And I haven't seen any other applicant go through this, not one, not one. I've seen HCAs come through, agreements happen very quickly. I have not seen one applicant go through what DM is going through right now. I think it's unfair and it's unjust, and I really hope that Judge Payne can relay this information, because I think you're the only one from the administration outside of Attorney Shea, can relay this information to the city. This, this isn't fair, and I would hate for any lawsuits to come before the city because of the things that's happening right now. Attorney Shea, I had seen that you had unmuted at one point, and I don't know how much you know about the process. I know Attorney G is gone, she's left the city of Springfield. So, and before her was to, oh gosh, why am I blanking on her name? Yeah, Tashina Davis, she started with the process with us, and she actually went through the whole application process at the time. Both are gone, but Attorney Shea, I don't know if you know or have any inside information on what the holdup is for this applicant?
I do not, I have not, this is not something that has been an issue that I've worked on in the past. I may in the future, after this meeting, look into it for you and try to get a straight answer. It seems like the big stumbling block that I've learned today was the initial second traffic study that Mr. Signoli required. And if she's indicated that that was good, I would think that the site plan, not knowing what the site planned, I would think the site plan simply must show exits and entrance to the property and how that's gonna be handled, which I think would be critical. But I think if that's what it is, I would think this project appears, from what we've heard, in much better shape to move forward.
Well, I have an email, and I'm gonna read it to you all, from Chris Nolli, and it says, "The traffic study was approved months ago. The petitioner has not submitted a formal site plan to DPW for our review. We have provided him numerous standards and expectation, but he refuses to submit anything." And like Attorney Shea and Counselor Govan just said, it was approved during the City Council hearings meeting. So, I'm not really sure, in addition, what, what they need, because before we get the special permit, it goes to all these departments. So, before we get it for approval, these departments see it. So, what in addition is needed if it was approved through the city before coming to the City Council? Judge Payne, do you have any inside information, and I'll get right back to you, Counselor Govan?
I don't, Counselor, I'm attending the meeting here at your request, and I really have not been a part of any of these discussions up to this point.
Okay, well, thank you for attending, Judge Payne, we definitely appreciate that.
Counselor Whitfield, if I could?
Sure.
This is Ken Shea, you know, what I'll do tomorrow? I will call Mr. Signoli and go over what I've learned today, see if I can get something and call you back direct and give you some information, because I'd hate to see that we're doing this, and it's a simple thing to fix. I don't, it doesn't, from what we've heard, appear to be a large stumbling block. It seems to be we're hung up on some sort of bureaucratic tape. And I'll see if I can cut through that for you and get you an answer, if I could do that.
That would be fantastic, Attorney Shea, and I would love to be able to relay good news to Ms. Hernandez tomorrow. This has got to be extremely stressful. And it would be even better if we could do it during Women's History Month, right?
Or St. Patrick's Day, may you have the.
Or St. Patrick's Day, that's right, either one. Counselor Govan?
I guess, thank you so much, Chairwoman Whitfield. So, I guess that's my question, is where are we in the process and what is needed? I really appreciate Attorney Shea making that call tomorrow, and hopefully finding something out tomorrow, so that we could relay the information to Ms. Hernandez and Attorney Brian Shea. When did that email get sent out, Counsel Whitfield, from Chris?
Monday.
That was on Monday? So, so the site plan has already been submitted, it sounds, because the special permit was approved. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say, and I wanted to ask that question, when was that email sent out? And if, I appreciate Attorney Ken Shea making that call tomorrow, finding out exactly what it is. I'd love, Counsel Whitfield, if we could get a follow-up as soon as you know it, so that we could figure out a way to move forward. Thank you.
That'd be great, and I just wanted to ask Attorney Shea something, because in a different email from Chris Nolli, he said that you've been difficult to deal with, how many encounters have you had with Chris Nolli?
So, I've never spoken with him over the phone. I've only exchanged emails with him. I'm surprised that I'm being labeled as difficult. Again, you know, I'm eight months into this, you have mentioned the amount of money that's being expended. I haven't, but I can tell you it's tremendous. And as far as the risk here, as much as I love Springfield, this building has been vacant. this building has been vacant and dilapidated for some twenty years. The rehabilitation for this building is going to be close to four million dollars probably when it's done. And I don't know how many other uses are going to be available for this beyond us. We're paying a very significant price for it and, and committed to the build-out. So if I'm being difficult, I would apologize for that, although I really don't think I am, but I certainly would apologize. But all my emails have been by way of email. They've been inquisitive, if, but certainly not adversarial. I've simply tried to lay out the process and try to gain an understanding of where we are. When I first met, I was first directed to deal with Mr. Carr, who I seem to have satisfied. And we seem to have worked fairly well together. We had multiple conversations over the telephone. He was very accessible. He acknowledged that he was satisfied with the results of the traffic study, and he also understood the posture that we were in, in this particular process, and he understood that a full site plan at this particular juncture would not be necessary. Yet, when my conversation concluded with, with Mr. Carr, who I was directed to deal with, that's when Mr. Signoli stepped in and said, "No, this process is over." And I was like, because he wants the site plan. And again, I submitted a site plan back in July of last year, which if you needed something in addition to on that site plan, I would have thought that would have come up through the special permit process, which we could have very easily added and would have been subject to the approval of the city council. But, but that's not. It just seems to be, again, misdirected, does not appear to be a clear process for this particular event, transferring an HCA, right? There isn't a guideline that I can go to in dealing with the city, and it, and it seems as though the process is kept, you know, very cloaked from the applicant. I don't know where we are in the process. Like, I appreciate the fact that there'll be phone calls tomorrow to Mr. Signoli, but I still don't know if there's any other department that is, that has found our request to be objectionable.
Well, Attorney Shay has said that he will look in, into it for us, so we're going to get to the bottom of it for you. I would just ask if you could send me the email correspondence. To the rest of the counselors, so we could just review it from, from Andrew Carr all the way down to Chris Signoli, so that we could, you know, just gauge what's happening here. I just, I just hate that, I hate to think that it's a personal conflict, like, I don't want to think that in my head. You know, I, I want it to be, you know, that it's just some misunderstanding and that we get over it, so you guys are able to start your build-out and open shortly after that. So I, again, thank Attorney Shay for going ahead and doing that background research for us. But if you could send us that correspondence, that would be very helpful. And you could send it to me and I'll get it circulated.
Okay. And if you need me to appear before the council again, Counselor Whitfield, I'd be more than happy to make myself available.
Sure. I, I think that it might be helpful for the whole council to hear you, although we have a nice number. Everyone's not hearing what's going on with this particular applicant. And I think that the story needs to be told.
We certainly appreciate. We certainly appreciate your sincere interest in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Shay. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I, I just wanted to say, listening to this discussion, the city council has given their approval. Phil Dromy has given their approval. The two neighborhood councils are, as Attorney Brian Shay has said, are very excited about DM coming there and, and taking over this, this vacant space. So I mean, who else do they need? That's what I don't understand. If he's already got all these other approvals and the neighborhood council's welcoming them with open arms, it's, it's really strange and very concerning what's going on here.
It's really strange, Counselor Walsh. I agree with you a hundred percent. I agree with you a hundred percent. So when I heard everything that was going on, I was like, well, I'm just hoping it's not a civil rights violation. I'm just hoping that there's equal opportunity. I'm just hoping that there's equity in the process. I'm just hoping that there's fairness and transparency in the process. And I hope going forward that we will get clear guidelines on what folks need to do when they're transferred their HCA to a different location, because if this is happening now, and this is for the second time, it may happen again in the future, and we need clear guidance on what the process is. It shouldn't be piecemealed. It shouldn't be, okay, give us a site plan. Oh, no, now give us a traffic study. Oh, no, now we need this. Give the list to transfer the HCA from one location to another, so that we can expedite it, get it done, and folks are not spinning their wheels, not spinning extra financial burdens on this process without any type of build-out or anything getting done. This is not fair to the applicant. The neighborhood wants it, like you said, and it's creating more jobs. It's creating more jobs in the city of Springfield. Why wouldn't we want this revenue, jobs? Taking a dilapidated property and putting it on the tax roll. Why wouldn't we want these things? I'm not understanding this.
And why would, want to support a female business owner?
Right.
I think they should go top of the list.
Three female business owners.
Three.
Three female business owners, and we don't have a Latino marijuana business owner yet. We, we got to be fair and equitable. Fair and equitable. So I don't have anything else to say, Attorney Shay. Again, I thank you very much. Judge Payne, thanks for joining us to get the information firsthand as well. Counselors, does anyone else have anything to say, ask, or if not, we'll adjourn the meeting and we will get to work tomorrow.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right. So Ms. Hernandez, again, wish you well.
Yes, good health.
Yes, and we will do the best we can for you. Thank you.